Welcome to our weekly Boston City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Baker. Counselor Campbell. Counselor Siomo. Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. And Counselor Zachem.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And could you please mark that Counselor Campbell is here as well?
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to ask all counselors and guests to please rise, and I'll invite Counselor Lamatina to be up here with me as he'll lead our Pledge of Allegiance later, and also invite up our dear Madam Clerk to deliver the invocation.
Blessed are the just, for they have the reward in indestructible integrity. Blessed are they who labor in the vineyards of public realm, for they shall be remembered. Blessed are they who love their nation enough to praise its strength and criticize its weakness, for they shall be made wise. Blessed are public officials who are responsive to the needs of these, the least of the people, for they shall be deputies of the community. Blessed are they who serve the public good, for their reward is in being used. Blessed are the powerful who acknowledge their power as both gifts and responsibilities, for they know the binding obligations of their bounty. Blessed are they who rebuke narrow self-interest to sustain the Commonwealth, for they are the patriots the nation needs. Blessed are they who rise above partisan loyalties, for they shall administer a public press. And blessed are all people who seek justice in an imperfect world, for they shall be welcomed into this beloved community.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. We'll start with approval of the minutes from last week's meeting. Are there any edits or amendments? Seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. And on to communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Madam President, would you like to read from 0722?
Yes, all in this section together, please.
Thank you. 0722, message and order for confirmation of the renewal appointments of constables authorized to serve civil process upon filing of their bonds for the period commencing May 1st, 2017, and ending April 30th, 2020. Docket number 0723, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of new constables authorized to serve civil process upon filing of their bonds for the period commencing May 1st, 2017, and ending April 30th, 2020. Docket number 0724, message and order for confirmation of the appointment of renewal of inspectional services constables authorized to serve civil process upon filing of their bonds for the period commencing May 1st, 2017, and ending April 30th, 2020. And docket number 0725, message and order for the confirmation of the appointment of new inspectional service constables authorized to serve civil process upon filing of their bonds for the period commencing May 1st, 2017, and ending April 30th, 2020.
On dockets 0722 through 0725, Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam President. Moving for suspension and passage on these four dockets. And just for everyone's edification, in light of a hearing that our colleague, City Counsel Tim McCarthy, had hosted, and after conferring with you, Madam President, and our clerk, got confirmation just a few minutes ago from our Commissioner, who is confirming that the new policy moving forward with respect to these renewals, as well as future renewals, will be that they all have to submit to fingerprinting, and they're all subject to what's called triple I, which is a multi-state background check. So happy to report that, and also move for suspension and passage. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and Counselor Flaherty as well. Just to, I just briefly want to thank the Walsh administration for focusing on the hearing that we had last year, I believe it was in October. Just, there's 50 constables here today that we're hoping to suspend and pass, but just so you know, because of the additional steps that they've taken through the hearing that we had, eight of the constables that were hoping to become constables withdrew because they didn't want to be fingerprinted, and two of the people who were fingerprinted were not allowed to become constables because of what they found in their fingerprints. So clearly, through this hearing and through this administration, we're addressing a problem that was, you know, clearly was shown when the two police officers were shot in East Boston. So I'm glad that they're moving forward, and I congratulate them. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. At this time, Counselor Flaherty moves for suspension of the rules and passage of each of the four dockets. We'll take them one by one. Docket 0722, all in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Ayes have it, docket 0722 has been passed. On docket 0723, all in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 0723 has been passed. Docket 0724, all in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Ayes have it, docket 0724 has been passed. And finally, on docket 0725, all in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Ayes have it, docket 0725 has been passed. Reports of public officers and others. Madam Clerk, if you could read each of, all of this section together as well.
Thank you. Docket number 0726, notice was received from the Mayor of the reappointment of David Quigley as an Associate Commissioner of the Boston Park and Recreation Commission for term expiring January 17, 2021. Docket number 0727, notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment of William Epperson as an Associate Commissioner of the Boston Park and Recreation Commission for term expiring January 1st, 2021. Docket number 0728, notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment of John Barrows as the City of Boston's representative to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council for term expiring May 11, 2020. Docket number 0729, notice was received from the Mayor of the appointment of John Redd as a member of the Boston Employment Commission for term expiring August 13, 2018.
Dockets number 0726 through 0729 will be placed on file. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 0695, message and order authorizing an appropriation for $4,400,000 from the income of the 21st Century Fund, also known as the Public Educational or Governmental Access and Cable Related Fund, in support of public educational and government access.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Ways and Means, Counselor Siomo.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Ways and Means met on Monday, May 15. We took testimony from Mike Lynch, the Director of Broadband and Cable, and Joshua Franklin Hodge, Chief Technology Officer for Do-It. In 2016, administrative changes were made to the fund to provide guidance for better accounting methodology as a result of the Municipal Reform Act in 2015. Payments are made from cable franchise companies such as Comcast, RCN, and Verizon FiOS to the city of Boston. The $4.4 million appropriation will be used to support public access television and radio stations dedicated to public, educational, and governmental programming. In addition, funding will also be used to monitor compliance with cable franchise agreement or prepare for license renewal per the legislation. Recipients of these funds include the Boston City Council TV, City TV, and the new WBCA Low Power FM Community Radio Station and others, which are all essential to community programming services. They are in their fifth year of level funding, and the Cable Office received approximately the same amount of funding for 2016. Verizon FiOS is currently serving West Roxbury, Dorchester, Dudley Square, and Roxbury. They have started offering services to thousands of residents and continue to build on that success. RCN's footprint is seen around the city with some overlap of service and competition with the other cable franchise companies. Discussed was competition from various cable franchise that will offer better prices and service to its customers. I recommend this docket ought to pass.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. Counselor O'Malley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to echo the request of our great Ways and Means Chairman, Counselor Siomo. And I just wanted to note, I participated in the hearing, it was very, very illustrative and very interesting, and it's helped us really build a powerhouse in this city with BNN, Boston Neighborhood Network, our public access channel. This has funded the success of BNN, and I just wanted to rise to say, the other part of that success has been the legendary General Manager of BNN, Curtis Henderson, resident of District 6, who is retiring next month after really building this station and doing so much. So he's not here, and I'm sure we will be vetting him appropriately, but I just wanted to mention Curtis and the great work that he's done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. At this time, Counselor Siomo moves for acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket 0695. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Ayes have it, docket 0695 has been passed.
Docket numbers 0536 through 0543, orders for the FY18 operating budget, including annual appropriations for the departmental operations, annual appropriations for school departments, and appropriations for other post-employment benefits known as OPIB. Capital budget appropriations, including loan orders and lease and purchase streams.
Dockets numbers 0536 through 0543 will remain in the Committee on Ways and Means.
Docket number 0123, ordinance creating the Community Preservation Committee.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you, Madam President. As a follow-up to the hearing that took place back on March 23, the committee held a working session that was, Madam, sponsored by myself and Counselor Campbell, this past Monday on May the 15. The working session was attended by administration officials, Sheila Dillon, Chief of DND, Robert Girard, Deputy Director of DND, Carl Spector, Commissioner of the Environment, Chris Cook, Commissioner of Parks Department, along with Sam Tyler of the Boston Municipal Research Bureau, as well as Tom Callahan and a whole coalition from ESBD of Boston. We did an overview of what was discussed at the hearing and looked for some common ground to move forward, with the intention of coming up with a final proposal that could be implemented as the appropriate legislation to create the committee to oversee the community preservation projects. Counselor Campbell and myself had presented an amended version of the initial proposal based on testimony at the hearing, and key features of that include how the City Council would establish a special committee to make appointments, factors to consider when considering appointments to the CPC, as well as diversity language for both issues around diversity, but also geographical diversity, as well as diverse talent skills and backgrounds of the individuals that would be serving. Due to this still being a work in progress, I recommend that the matter remain in committee and would defer it to my co-sponsor if she has any further comments. Also, like to address the issue that there could be a time-sensitive matter with some deadlines. So I'm waiting to get some confirmation as to whether or not we need to make approvals before June 1. And if that's the case, then this matter would be coming for us for a vote, I would expect, on May 24, just for planning purposes. But in the event that that's not a hard, fast deadline, then we have a little bit more time through the working session to come up with something, again, trying to find common ground on a number of different issues. So with that, leave it in committee, but if my co-sponsor has any additional comments likely to hear from.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Wu. I just wanted to thank Counselor Flaherty and all of the advocates and the administration for coming to the working session, as well as our colleagues. This will be a task where we try to find compromise between different perspectives and different sides. I think we're well on our way. I think there's just a sort of a few outstanding things, but if our colleagues and others have things they want to add or things they want us to edit, we're waiting for those. So email us, call us, and then the goal is to have a version that really reflects everyone's thoughts and perspectives. But thank you, Counselor Flaherty, for your partnership. I also want to thank Christine from Central Staff for her work, as well as our team members, Lila and Shayk, for really organizing us and making sure that this got scheduled in a timely manner. So thank you to them as well.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Docket number 0123 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations. Motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 0730, Counselor Wu, the following resolution urging the extension of the temporary protection status for Haitian nationals.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chair recognizes Counselor Wu.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I'd like to first make a motion to suspend Rule 12 and add several co-sponsors to this. I know this is a topic that many of us had been working on individually, and so want to make sure everybody gets credit for that. I would like to add Counselor Jackson, Counselor McCarthy, and Counselor Zachem.
Are there any objections to adding those co-sponsors? Seeing none.
Thank you. I rise today to ask this council to make our voice heard urging the extension of temporary protected status, or TPS, for Haitian refugees by the President and Department of Homeland Security. Yes, this is a federal issue. It's outside of our jurisdiction technically, but it's also a moral and humanitarian issue that affects residents in our district and all across the city of Boston. The greater Boston region is home to the country's third-largest Haitian population, more than 40,000 strong, and Boston, we all know Boston benefits every day from this thriving community that drives our economy, our culture, our civic fabric. Out of this community, nearly 1 in 10 residents living in this area are beneficiaries of an emergency immigration status called TPS. TPS is given when people are temporarily unable to return safely to their home country because of ongoing armed conflict, an environmental disaster, or other extraordinary and temporary conditions. So you may recall, in 2010, the U.S. Department of Homeland Security granted TPS to Haitian nationals who were in the U.S. as of January 10, 2010, which was the date of that devastating earthquake in Haiti. The designation allows these residents to continue living and working in Boston and in the U.S. for 18 months at a time, and it requires renewal every time. It's been renewed every time since then. The latest extension, however, expires on July 22, and the federal government needs to make a decision by May 23. The decision should be made based on conditions in Haiti and whether it's safe for people to return there. But what we've learned in the media recently is that the Trump administration has been asking strange questions about this extension. They've been asking for data on how many members of the Haitian community in the U.S. who are beneficiaries of TPS have been involved with crimes. They've been asking how many people are receiving public benefits, which is not even legally permitted with this program. So I just want to be very clear that legally, the extension of TPS should be based solely on whether conditions in Haiti are safe. And what we know is that Haiti has not yet recovered from the 2010 earthquake, infrastructure-wise and social services-wise. They continue to suffer from rampant Zika and Chikungunya outbreaks, these diseases that we are asking for humanitarian efforts to help contain, and Haiti was recently battered by Hurricane Matthew. So the fact that top U.S. immigration officials are digging for irrelevant information about the community in Boston and in the U.S. is not only unprecedented and unjustified, it's wrong. This administration is looking to create a misleading narrative about our neighbors, about our Boston residents, about this entire community, and it's our job today to push back on that. Finally, I'll just say that May is Haitian Heritage Month as well, and a celebration that's particularly important to Boston. We are the first city in the country to formalize this celebration, as we honor the history, culture, and contributions every year. Counselor McCarthy and others will be hosting the Haitian breakfast right here in the City Council rooms, and then moving to the plaza for the flag raising on Friday. But today, we can do more than offer simple. We can take a concrete stance against an administration federally that appears to be headed towards an unjust conclusion. And so I ask everyone to join us in support of this resolution that stands up for our neighbors, our loved ones, our city, in extending the ability for Haitian nationals to continue living and working in Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Wu. Madam Clerk, did we add the names of the co-sponsors that Counselor Wu wanted to add? Thank you. Counselor Zachem.
Mr. Vice President, I thank Counselor Wu for her leadership on this and for allowing me to join as a co-sponsor. It's incredibly important, you know, as Chair of our Special Committee on Civil Rights, this is a major issue, obviously, in the city of Boston for our Haitian neighbors and for really all of our neighbors. I think something that this council has done consistently over the past few years has been speaking with one loud, united voice in support of moving forward instead of backwards on issues of civil rights and inclusion, equality, access. We need to continue to do that. We are unfortunately faced with a federal administration that is bent on dividing Americans, not just Bostonians, but people across this country, and it looks like, from Counselor Wu's statements, is seeking to do that here through irrelevant, looking for irrelevant issues, straw men, and other things to send us in the wrong direction and to sort of turn our back on refugees, some of the United States, with some hiccups over the years, but has throughout our history welcomed people who were in need to our shores and protected them and nurtured them and grown them, in as many ways the reason Boston is such a powerful community, is such a thriving community because of our diversity. So I certainly want to move on this. I urge our colleagues to join us in calling on the President, whoever our President may be, in July, to take this action and make sure that we continue to keep people who need to be here in this country protected, particularly in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. And your name was added as a co-sponsor. Counselor McCarthy?
Mr. Vice President, I'm not exactly sure how to follow that one. As you can see, fellow counselors, I had written a resolution myself, and clearly we're on the same page with this, Madam President. I'd certainly like to add some of the language from my resolution to docket number 0730, if possible. I want to thank my staff, Lee Blazi, in particular, again, Central Staff, Juan Lopez, who's outdone himself with a tremendous, tremendous writing of this resolution. But just to echo my fellow counselors, the condition in Haiti remains dire, and in District 5, we have a large number of Haitians, and I speak to them daily about the compounding effects between the incomplete earthquake recovery, as well as the ongoing drought from Hurricane Matthew, exasperated by all of the diseases that Counselor Wu had spoke of. What people have to understand is that the Haitian TPS holders, they're hard workers. They've contributed $280 million to the U.S. GDP and $42 million in Social Security and Medicare each year. In addition, they send millions and millions of dollars in life-sustaining money back to their families and communities in Haiti, which greatly contribute to helping their families survive. This proactive, this is a proactive and affecting legislation would be addressing the humanitarian crisis in Haiti. And addressing the humanitarian crisis on the immediate shores is not only the right thing to do, but it serves as a national interest by reaffirming our commitment to provide aid and assistance to our neighbors. So I'm very proud to have my name on this legislation, and I certainly hope that we get this through and up as fast as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCarthy. Chair recognizes Counselor Jackson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice President. I rise also to add my support. I think it's really a question of who we are in Boston that we are considering today. 2010, it seems like yesterday, when we heard that there was a hurricane, I'm sorry, a huge, huge, huge event that occurred in Haiti. And I remember how the city came together. And over 2,000 folks got together at the Cathedral of the Holy Cross. Mayor Manino, at the time, opened all kinds of supports in the city of Boston to ensure that we were doing right by our brothers and sisters of Haitian descent. And this has to be our stand in Boston with such a large and important population for us to say to President Trump that you must extend, that you absolutely must do the humane and right thing. And I think it's interesting today that we are also honoring Malcolm X, and he stated that "truth is on the side of the oppressed." He also noted that "if you don't stand for something, you'll fall for anything." It is critical that we, as Boston City counselors, stand up for our brothers and sisters of Haitian descent. And I think Counselor McCarthy noticed something really interesting. I was part of an organization called GBIO, and we were working together to organize folks and around money that was being sent and the usury cost that was going, was taking away from the money that was being sent. And there was a Haitian church that spoke up, and they were, a church of 300 people were sending $1 million back to their home country. It is critical that we, again, stand up and do the right thing, and we make sure that this document goes to the White House and also goes to Department of Homeland Security as the city that represents the third-largest population of Haitian brothers and sisters. We just said it not that long ago, with liberty and justice for all, and the only way that would happen is if TPS is extended. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Chair recognizes Counselor Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I rise to have my name added. Also want to recognize the great Haitian community. They've made tremendous contributions to our city. Proud to, on behalf of the council, 15 years ago, to host the very first Haitian Independence Day recognition and also start the breakfast series, which continues today, on behalf of that community. Also, I have a question through the Maker with respect to the last whereas. The last whereas extends for an additional 18 months, and my question, I guess, is, is that sort of typical and pro forma of sort of TPS extensions to an arbitrary number, or could we, through a friendly amendment, increase that beyond 18 months, to say, three years?
... a timeframe, but it is, 18 months is the maximum legally that TPS can be extended each time, and then it's an evaluation every 18 months of the conditions in that country.
Thank you for clarity. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And you'd like to add your name, Counselor Flaherty? If you'd please add Counselor Flaherty's name. Counselor Campbell? Would you like to speak on this matter? Sorry to bother you.
I'd like to add, what'd you say?
Sorry to bother you.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
I'd like to, first of all, add my name, and although I'm smiling, this is obviously a serious issue. I do remember when we were talking about sanctuary cities and the city of Boston being a sanctuary city and BPS being, Counselor Jackson's order discussing whether or not we should declare BPS the sanctuary schools, it was brought to my attention by my awesome team member, Ellie, who is passionate about immigration, not only because of her own personal story, but because of her past professional work in this space, that the number of folks affected by the immigration policies- work in this space, that the number of folks affected by the immigration policies coming out of the Trump administration was going to be increasing because of these temporary statuses. And that's not knowing what the Trump administration was going to do with respect to them. So we're seeing that. There's legitimate fear, obviously, held in the Haitian population when it comes to their immigration status. There's legitimate fear in immigrant community as a whole, particularly those in the Caribbean community, when it comes to their immigration status. So I applaud Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Wu, for their leadership on this. District 4 also has a large Haitian population. I think, obviously, doing a resolution is what we can do from our, from our perch in pushing the federal government and our counterparts to pay attention to these issues. I, I do think we also have to think about how we have conversations with those in these communities about getting them legal representation, about connecting them to legal services and panels and information workshops, so they know their rights, so they know what they can actually do with respect to those rights. I think it's really important that anyone who has any sense of fear about their immigration status or whether or not they'll be deported from the city of Boston, be connected to all of the free programming that is happening across the city of Boston when it comes to actually informing them as to what their rights are. I applaud the nonprofit and legal organizations and the bar associations in the city for the work they're doing in this space. It's concrete work that is essential and important. I think that this idea of the fear, I mean, we spend a lot of time in, in spaces with the Haitian community, particularly this month, and the fear is real. People are really concerned about whether or not they're going to be deported tomorrow, whether or not they're going to be deported today. So I think in addition to resolutions, and I said this before, we need to think about concrete steps that we can take to support these families. We need to recognize that the city of Boston is a city of immigrants. We need to pull in those folks who frankly disagree with us and get them to understand that their neighbors, although they may be immigrants, they also are hardworking. They contribute to our community, they contribute to our civic associations, they contribute to our city, they contribute to this body, they contribute to the landscape of our community. They're a essential part. And frankly, if they did not exist in our community, our economy would stop, our economy would not work, and we would not get the same level of tax revenue and what we need for our city to operate well. So that, we need to also pull in those folks who disagree with us and have them understand that these are our neighbors, these are our friends, these are our constituents. And frankly, this is what the city of Boston should always be about, welcoming anyone who is coming from a devastating situation for opportunity. So I'm excited to add my name. Thank you, Counsel Wu, for your leadership. Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. And also thank you to the rest of my colleagues for their work in this space before I even joined the council. So thank you to all my colleagues as well. Thank you, Counsel Baker.
Thank you, Counsel.
And thank you.
Can you please add Counsel Siomo? Madam Clerk, Counsel Siomo, Counsel O'Sabi George, Counsel Lamontina, Counsel Linehan, I believe we already added you, Tim, Counsel O'Malley, and Counsel Presley. And please add the chair. Counsel Wu would like to suspend and adopt. All those in favor? All those against? 0730 has been adopted. Huh? Michelle's.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Onto personnel orders.
Docket number 0731. Counsel Wu for Counselor O'Malley.
Counsel O'Malley moves for suspension in passage of docket 0731. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Docket 0731 has been passed.
Docket number 0732. Counsel Wu for Counsel O'Malley.
Counsel O'Malley moves for suspension in passage of docket 0732. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Docket 0732 has been passed.
Docket number 0733. Counsel Wu for Counsel McCarthy.
Counsel McCarthy moves for suspension in passage of docket 0733. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Docket 0733 has been passed.
Docket number 0734. Counsel Wu for Counsel Lamontina.
Counsel Lamontina moves for suspension in passage of docket 0734. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Docket 0734 has been passed. I am informed by Madam Clerk that there is one late filed matter, which is personnel in nature, which will be added to the agenda in the absence of objection. Hearing none, the matter is added. Madam Clerk, would you please read that late file?
Counsel Michelle Wu for Counsel O'Malley.
Counsel O'Malley moves for suspension in passage of the first late filed matter. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The first late file has been passed. There are no late filed matters for the consent agenda, so we'll move for adoption of the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The consent agenda is adopted. Would anyone like to pull a matter from the green sheets? Great. And then we'll pause at this point for statements or announcements. Counsel Presley, for what purpose do you rise?
Thank you, Madam President. Unanimous consent, just to, to make a statement.
Have it.
All right. We already voted on it in the consent agenda, a resolution by myself and Counsel Jackson that May 19th be proclaimed in perpetuity as Malcolm X Day in the city of Boston. I did just want to offer a free, a few brief words on this and read the formal resolution into the record. I do think it's important. You know, in our history, we have three prominent civil rights icons that have been assassinated, all black men, all names beginning with the letter M. Malcolm X, Martin Luther King Jr., and Medgar Evers. It is history's tendency and inclination to often narrowly define these men by their tragic assassinations or by one or two speeches. Or, if I'm being really frank, history's inclination has often forgotten those two other Ms., Malcolm X and Medgar Evers. Thanks to some local citizen activists like Jamal Crawford and Siddiqui Cambon, they've made sure that we have not forgotten the contributions, the world contributions of a son of Boston Malcolm X. And bearing that in mind, tomorrow, there will be a flag raising at noon, and then there'll be the annual Malcolm X Breakfast, which will take place on Saturday. It has been encouraging to see recently a greater appreciation for the full breadth of the contributions of Malcolm X here in the city of Boston. You may recall, the city had an archaeological dig at his home, which Boston Public School students and others were able to partake in. A couple of years ago, Boston Magazine did a piece on the 100 Best Bostonians, and I nominated Malcolm X, and he was accepted and featured in that piece about our 100 Best Bostonians. And this is what I submitted for that story. That is now the template for this resolution. And after I'm finished reading this, I'll introduce Counsel Jackson, who'll say a few words as well. Whereas, just as you cannot separate Malcolm X, Al-Hajj Malik El Shabazz from American history, we cannot separate him from Boston's history. And whereas Malcolm X has deep Boston roots, his experience here shaped his viewpoint, outlook, and his personage in formidable ways. Malcolm X was born Malcolm Little in Omaha, Nebraska in 1925, and he came to Boston in 1940 as a teenager to live with his sister in Roxbury, and he lived here for 12 years. And whereas it was not just the hardship that he faced here that shaped him, he also saw a bustling, thriving black community, which he referred to, referring to Dudley Square as downtown Roxbury. And he talked about having never seen so many black folks who were prosperous and doing well until he came to Roxbury. Whereas Malcolm X is often known as provocative, antagonistic, polarizing, and controversial, enforcing us to take a harder look at ourselves and confront our underbelly. Now, that is an important narrative and part of his history and his contributions to our city and our country. He was also a scholar, a brilliant man, who evolved both in his philosophy and his activism, and ultimately, he was a humanist. Whereas Malcolm X is a reminder that, to quote him, quote-unquote, "black folk have been here in Boston for a long time." And Malcolm X represents the gift and the hardship of being black in Boston. Whereas he is a product of Boston, of Roxbury, in what he overcame, but also in the best of what Roxbury and Boston had to give. So be it resolved that the Boston City Council, in meeting assembled, honors Malcolm X for his numerous contributions to black history, humanity, Boston, and this country. And be it further resolved that the Boston City Council declares May 19th as Malcolm X Day in the city of Boston. So I thank all of you for voting on that today. If your schedule will permit, please join Jamal and others at the flag raising on City Hall Plaza at noon tomorrow. And Jamal, Siddiqui, maybe next time we'll do something for Betty, too. All right, then. And now I'll turn it over to my co-sponsor, District 7 City Councilor Tito Jackson.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Counsel Jackson, you have the floor.
Unanimous consent to make a statement, Madam President. I, I concur, Counsel Presley. I think it is important that we acknowledge the entirety of that family and, including the family who keeps the house to date. I would just simply rise to acknowledge a great Roxbury resident and a great Bostonian. And I, at times, have been called provocative and antagonistic. And I find, I find, I find peace in the quote that I used earlier. If you are unwilling to stand for something, you'll fall for anything. I think it is critical that we acknowledge someone who represents that, someone who represented an unapologetic, intelligent push to make sure that we saw and we see equity in the city of Boston. And I think it is important, what Counsel Presley noted, that when you ever see the movie Malcolm X, you saw a robust black business community in Roxbury. You saw folks who owned their own businesses and who employed people in their own neighborhoods and community. It is critical that we think about not only the past, but we think about what are we doing today? How do we have a city that is inclusive for all? How do we include MBEs? And I want to thank Counsel Presley and Counsel Wu for your work in looking at the fact in the city of Boston today, we spend well over $1.5 billion on contracts, and less than 2% of that actually goes to businesses owned by people of color. The charge of Malcolm X is not only one of the past, but is absolutely important to think about the President, the President and, and current President, too. It is our time to ensure that we stand for something, Boston City Council and city of Boston, so we don't fall for anything. I look forward to celebrating the flag raising and also give props to Jamal Crawford, as well as Siddiqui Cambon, as well as Vernon Robinson, for the work that they continue to do in the community to ensure that our history is not a mystery. Thank you so much, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson.
Something else.
Okay. I had seen Counsel McCarthy's button as well. For what purpose do you rise, Counselor?
Yes, unanimous consent to make a statement.
Proceed.
It's been brought up before. I didn't realize that Michael Flaherty started this 13 years ago, but this is the 13th Annual Haitian Breakfast and Haitian Flag Raising on Friday. I will have breakfast around 10:30 in the Pomante Room, and then we'll raise the flag at noon. Natasha Clerger will once again be the caterer, so it's real Haitian food. We're not serving donuts and coffee anymore. It's the real deal. And then we'll head outside. So I really would like to thank my fellow counselors who are helping co-sponsor it, and we'll head on out at noon. It really is a fun event, so I hope, I hope to see you there. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. And Counsel Presley.
All right. Unanimous consent to make a statement or announcement. Okay, thank you. I didn't want to tack it on before because Malcolm deserved his own moment, but I just wanted to, to share with all of you. If you've not seen the warring on social media, although I really don't think it's a real contest at all, we were just celebrating the contributions of an incredible man with roots in Roxbury. So, you know, we have had, we have given birth to much genius and innovation, and that is true for the arts as well. And so this evening, there will be a fan face-off, New Edition fans versus New Kids on the Block. We will be down in Dudley at Dudley Cafe in the bowling building, and it's, it's for a great cause. We're having a fan face-off, and the proceeds will benefit the Boston Debate League, which does incredible work in our Boston Public Schools there, and 16 of our high schools, 18 of our high schools, 16 of our middle schools, fostering leadership, how to develop complex arguments, literacy, citizen and civic engagement. And then the other charity that we'll be supporting is the Science Club for Girls. So we will be at the bowling building at Dudley Cafe from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. I will also be, I want to give a special shout-out and thanks to Michael Bivins from New Edition, who has been so generous, and New Kids on the Block. They've all donated concert tickets that will be raffled off to support these good causes. And I won't embarrass or shame any of you on the record right now by asking what team you are, but I'll just say, there really is no competition. Clearly, I'm team New Edition all day, every day, okay? And there'd be no New Kids if there had not been a New Edition, period, end of story. And that rests my case. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Presley. Finally, just one quick update on the renovation process and the accessibility project. So we are on schedule to start that early July, as soon as budget is, is hopefully over and done with. And we will, we're all but confirmed to be at Faneuil Hall for the summer meetings. The only issue now is that Faneuil Hall is already booked for the last two meetings in September. We had planned for a three-month process, so we're checking now to make, to see what the exact timeline is in terms of when the construction would be done. And if we, we may need to either move those meetings to a different day of the week to accommodate their schedule over there, find a different location, or worst-case scenario, not have those meetings, but I'm, we're doing everything we can to find an alternative solution, but just flagging those two dates, September 20th and 27th might have to be flexible. Okay, anything else? Great. Then at this time, I'd like to ask all counselors and guests to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counsel O'Sabi George, Roscoe Coolidge, and Teresa Scachi. For Counsel Flaherty, Coleman Mannion. And for Counsel Lamontina, Ida E. Lamontina, the counselor's cousin. A moment of silence, please. Chair moves that when the council adjourns today, we do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. We are scheduled to meet again Wednesday, May 24th at 12:00 noon. All in favor of adjournment, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Council is adjourned.[1711.16][1711.16]